This podcast is powered by the MIT TV of Romeo, Michigan. If you're looking to start a podcast for your business or personal use, look no further than the MIT TV. Their in-studio podcast experience allows you to record perfect audio and capture amazing video. That's all right here at the MIT TV Podcast Studio in Romeo, Michigan. Contact them now via email for a free consultation and to schedule a studio visit at mit.tvpodcast@gmail.com. We're here with Allison Bowman and we're talking about the November election. And during this time, we always have a lot of interest from our viewers and listeners. And they're always asking about getting to know the candidates. Because in our busy lives, we don't have time to know everybody. Most people don't even know how many board members or that there is a board. Unless they're somehow involved with their, you know, with their kids or their homes. So a lot of times you end up going to the ballot and feeling responsible to vote, but then not knowing, you know, who that person is. So we thought we would really focus on, you know, a more casual approach and getting to know who you are, how long you've been here and all that. And I know you've got a great story. So if you could just tell us a little bit about yourself, how long you've been here and all that?
Sure. We moved here in 2021. We relocated from Alaska. My husband's military and law enforcement, so his job's taken us all over the place. But we realized now that the girl, my three teenage daughters are going to be in high school, or starting high school, we need to settle and stay put. So his unit had been trying to get him to come here for a long time. So we finally took the jump and we moved here. And I knew I wanted my kids in Romeo before we even found a home because in 2021, homes were going like that. And we lucked out. It wasn't on the market. We took it. It just all worked out. So we've been here since the fall of 2021. My girls are on their fourth year at Romeo. I mean, we love it here.
Then how old are they?
They're 14, 15, and 17.
Wow, that's a handful.
I get that a lot.
Especially girls.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they're, my girls are amazing. I mean, we've, we haven't lived an average life as other people because my husband's military career. I mean, it's taken us to some pretty cool places. But I think that they had to grow up a lot sooner than, you know, I grew up in the same town my whole life. My, the town I grew up in was a lot like Romeo. And so
In Alaska?
No, we're east coasters. I'm from Maryland and my husband's from Pennsylvania. So Romeo feels like where we grew up, but my girls didn't get to experience that. So it's pros and cons, but they had to mature faster than other kids their age because of all the places we've lived and things they've seen. And they're really just finding their stride here in Romeo. I mean, Romeo's been welcoming from the get-go. I mean, they've just been, it's a big family community here. And, you know, that's why we wanted to be here. We had friends from here and they told us that you guys would love it here. And the more and more digging I did, the more research, I just, we looked everywhere else and I didn't want to live anywhere else. So we're staying put.
And are your daughters going through the academies?
Yes.
At what ages?
My senior will be certified level one, I think, EMT by the time she graduates. And she's excited. My youngest is interested, or I'm sorry, my middle one is interested in engineering. So she wants to work for NASA. She goes all over the place because she's very, very smart. So she's in the Dem Academy. And then my youngest, we homeschool her because the sheer size of Romeo schools was just too much for her. She does better in a smaller class setting, so we homeschool her. Because that's just what works best for her.
Right.
So everybody's happy and doing well.
You have your hands full.
Yeah, I do. I do.
That's a lot going on. I mean, it's nice. I have friends that, you know, live the military life and moving around and, and all that, you know, trying to acclimate the, the kids back into schools and stuff. So it's kind of good that you landed in a really nice spot.
We really did. I mean, and we're pros at it. I mean, but it makes you tougher. It makes you a tighter knit family. And I wouldn't change it for anything. I mean, we've, I mean, we're, we're happy to be here and stay, but I wouldn't change all our other experiences because it, it brought us to where we are and it made my kids the way they are. And of course, I think they're amazing.
Yeah, of course you do. Well, with that busy schedule, how do you see getting enough time? You know, we, we talk about, you know, critical thinking. We, we talk about how we need to be more aware and more prepared, more educated, you know, to make decisions, especially at the board level. How do you see yourself, you know, working that into your daily life, the time it takes?
Right. Well, I mean, I, I kind of opened my eyes up about three years ago, I think, like a lot of people did after COVID. And the world just changed. Education changed. Everything changed. And it became a new normal for everyone. So I jumped right in when we got here to Romeo. So I've worked here. I worked in as a cashier in food service. And then I substitute taught here. And now I'm currently school security. So at the high school. So I've been in the buildings basically since my children started. So I've, I've kind of had a unique inside view and outside view as a parent, seeing what's going on. And that's been a blessing mostly. I mean, there's always things you want, that you want to improve or things you see. But I've been pleasantly surprised, working alongside the dedicated teachers and administrators and support staff. And it's been, and I tell other parents who worry because they worry. They're not inside. They don't see. So they only assume. But I was pleasantly surprised with the dedicated teachers, the positivity, the family community. Everybody's welcoming. I mean,
What does it entail to be security in the school?
Well, I mean, there's different tiers. We have, we have two SROs. We have one at the high school and one at the middle school. I would love to see another one because the ninth grade building is separate and that's a give or take 500 children.
We just got done talking about that.
Yeah. And so we need another SRO. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not, we're not armed. We're just there to check doors all day, make sure kids are getting where they're going. You know, we, we're there, we have a lot of tasks, you know, and sometimes we help the teachers out. So our, our job is not black and white, but I love it. I, I love being there. I love knowing that the teachers feel safer that we're there. They, at least they tell us that. And I know the kids feel safer and I know the parents feel safer knowing that at least there's another set of eyes and ears. So, I mean, it just depends on the day, really.
So is that what kind of brought you to the decision to run for a position on the board?
Yeah. I mean, about three years ago, I came to my first board meeting and I spoke. And it was, I was basically saying, please don't put our kids back in masks.
I remember that.
It just kind of snowballed from there. I met the other moms, the typical moms that tend to attend most of the meetings. And they just kind of brought me in the fold and I made friends instantly. And I've attended every board meeting probably since for the last three years, give or take a vacation in the summer. So I've
Well, we filmed them all, so I watched them all. And I remember the first time you got up on the podium, you were really nervous. Your voice was shaking.
Oh, yeah.
And now it's like boom. You know, you, you, you're used to it and you know what you want. You know what you want to get across and you've been a, you know, a very strong advocate.
Well, it's about the kids. It affects my kids. It affects everyone else's kids.
And you see it every day, being in the schools.
Yeah. And that's a positive and a negative. It's a positive and a negative, you know? But I really feel like that gives me a dynamic view of where we could make improvements and things that are working really well that we can continue doing. So I mean, I, I have a whole lot of input on a lot of those things.
Yeah. So it started to impact you, started to impact your family and that's when you got involved.
Yes, got involved. I mean, various ways, but really I love my job the most. I love working with these kids. I mean, it's, not every day is easy. It's definitely a struggle. There's a lot of kids. We've never lived in a place this populated. So I still, on year four, even my girls sometimes were like, wow, it's a lot of people. It's just big.
It seems so small.
And it must if you've been here all the time. Even the people that live here are commenting, you know, wow, it used to be a dirt road here or a farm there. And I can't visualize that because, you know, we're on our fourth year here, so.
And it happened very fast.
That's, that's what I'm told.
Very fast. You know, in, while you're in the schools, you're well aware of this, of the different communities that have children in our district. You know, we have different governing bodies. We have Washington, Bruce, Romeo. You know, we have all these voices and concerns. And they all got to be a lot louder during COVID. Because you don't really, the typical person doesn't step up until it affects their children or their homes or their backyards or their water bills or their gas bills or whatever. They started to get more involved. And, you know, you've seen it through being a mom. You've seen it through being in the schools during that time. And how do you feel that the kids did, you know, through COVID? I mean, I think that our district did an outstanding job with what they had. I mean, they made some tough decisions, but it did bring people apart.
Yeah.
And there, there were different beliefs and there was different political values and, and everything else brought into something that typically isn't there.
Right.
So do you see that that has affected the kids, you know, every day?
Absolutely.
At their stress level and?
I mean, I think it's calmed down, but you know, I came into Romeo in 2021, so on the tail end of all that. But the same thing was happening where we were. We were on a military base. The same thing was happening there and back home and where I'm from. It just, everybody was scrambling. I mean, they were scrambling to figure out how to meet their educational needs. I mean, my kids were affected. Everybody's kids were affected. Teachers, I mean, I felt for the teachers. I really did. I, especially some of the older generations who didn't know how to use all this new technology. They were getting crash courses and all this rapidly changing digital technology. And I think the outcome of COVID, when it comes to the online learning, has been a good thing. We've learned how to adapt. Romeo has a Romeo Virtual Academy and that keeps growing. So a lot of students will just feel that like in-school isn't for them. So they have the option to go virtual and they have their own teachers, their own director and everything. So I mean, a lot of good has come out of it.
It gives them choices too.
Yes, and it gives them choices. So I think from what I see Romeo made, Romeo did the best they could. And now look what we have. We have all these other options for kids that can't learn this way or don't want to learn that way or might need more one-on-one or they work fine on their own. So I mean, in that sense, I think
Some good things.
They've done an amazing job with this. I work alongside some of the Virtual Academy employees because they're in our building and I just, I'm amazed. I really am amazed at the new learning opportunities that have come post-COVID. So a negative turned into a positive, I think, all over the place.
And I know just by watching you at the podium and, and I always see you at the meetings. And you look at people that are, you know, looking at getting, being in a position like a board member. And I know where your passions are. And I've asked this question, you know, of everyone. If the same thing happened again, because it's not likely, but hopefully it never does, knock on wood. But if, if it happened again, would you handle it the same way? Like, I, I know your stance on masks. Now we have a lot more education behind us about the masks and how effective, ineffective that they were.
Right.
And back then, when everything, you know, you were up there talking and we, no one knew anything.
Right.
You know, everybody was scrambling to do the research and all that. But now we have a little bit more education in those areas of vaccines, masks, you know, mandates. How would you handle something at the board level if it happened again?
If it happened again, I would still push for in-school and I would leave the option to mask or not mask. And basically the way it was when we started in 2021 and give them the option to be virtual. I mean, that's, that's kind of the way it is now. Because if they can't, they don't like in-school or it's not working, they can go virtual. So I, I would keep it the way it is now. Just make it an option and, you know, remind them
An option for the family, the parents to decide?
To decide if they want to send them or put them virtual or mask or not mask, freedom of choice. It comes down to freedom of choice and that's what people seem to tend to forget. You can't force people to do these things. And when you force people to do things, they, they tend to rebel. And I just think giving them the option and, and teaching the students and other staff and everyone not to, not to shame or belittle someone if they're wearing a mask and they're not like, just, just teach them that, hey, that's your choice and I respect that. That's really what it should boil down to.
Yeah. Yeah. And that's, comes back to parents being involved with their kids. How would you handle conflict resolution at the board level? You know, you've already, you've already, just coming to the meetings and, and being part of the meetings, you've seen the different conflicts. You know, how would you do things differently when you have to really reach across the table and speak to somebody that possibly doesn't have the same frame of mind as you? You know, how would you handle that?
Well, I mean, I'm, I, I see the division on the right and left. We all see it. The far, the fringes of anything. And the biggest problem is people are not talking. And when I kind of, when I started just speaking up three years ago, I realized nobody's reaching across the aisle. So my first thing is I love conversation. I love to sit and try to find some common ground, ask questions, learn about them. But as far as conflict, I'm coming to the table with my research. I'm good and I'm fast and I'm quick on my research. I have my sources and I have to know what I'm talking about. If I don't know what I'm talking about, then I would just look ridiculous and I wouldn't be making the best decisions for our district or kids. So just talking it out and pleading my case, explaining why I feel this way, depending on what the matter is at the board table and just trying to find the best solution that's going to meet the needs of all kids in a public school. That's just compromise or it would just depend on the issue.
Well, you've seen, I think the last meeting I was watching and, you know, they got, I mean, they've got great reports and they're doing a good job. But you've also seen, you know, after the meeting, people talking, people gathering, you know, people sharing information. And, and it seems like most are open-minded to hear the other side. You know, especially if you come with an educated hand and say, this is what I've read. But there's so much misinformation out there.
And it's skewed.
Yeah, or skewed a certain way. You know, how do you decipher that?
Well, I mean, so if we're talking about the issue of transgender. So just, just for an example, a couple of years ago, I started immersing myself in people that, you know, were living a transgender lifestyle. And I realized there was a local person here who is transgender, an adult and an activist speaking out against ideology and things like that. Just leave the kids be, you know, they
Let them be kids.
So I reached across the aisle to him and I learned a whole lot and we've become friends. And that right there is an example of just reaching across the aisle of something you really know nothing about. And instead of kind of being closed-minded about it, just reach across the aisle and you might, you might be surprised. And some of the things I've learned, I've expressed to other parents and their, their comment is, well, I never thought of it that way. All you have to do is ask.
Yeah.
You don't have to be friends. You don't have to, you just coexist and you, and you talk.
Right.
People are not willing to talk. They're, they're willing to throw, you know, darts, fingers and accused. But you really got to do the research and you really got to talk to people where they're at. Whatever the topic or whatever the issue, because you may, you may not always know. And if you didn't live it and you weren't affected by it, you know, you've got to, you've got to educate yourself.
So where do you stand with, you know, there's lots of rumors out there. There's lots of misinformation. We don't really know what the state is going to decide or what the federal government is going to decide. And where our, our planet's going to be in the next, you know, three months, two months. But we do hear the rumors. You know, we hear about the Furbies and we hear about, we, we've all talked about it today. What is your position? And if it comes to the table that they want to incorporate transgender bathrooms?
Well, I have three daughters, so the answer's simple. No. I do not want biological males in my daughter's bathroom or my employee bathroom. But it is a public school, so we have to meet the needs of all students because there's all walks of life everywhere. And so the fair option, and this is what we currently do, is to provide that third-party private bathroom. So that way everybody feels comfortable in their private spaces, you know? And that's just the way it should be. That's the fair way to meet the needs of every student, every employee. That's, that's really the simple answer, but
And is that third bathroom in all schools now?
Well, I can't answer for every building because I'm in the high school. But some of the older buildings, it's probably harder because, you know, they were built so long ago. But our high school has them. The office has them. A lot of the offices have been updated. So they have them. I mean, we have them for adults, employees, you know, because it just, so that would be, that's the solution.
So why do you think people are bringing that up so much, especially on social media? You know, when there already is a bathroom there.
Right.
There is already a choice.
I think because they don't, they just want something to be angry about. They want something to bark about, yell about. But they don't really have any idea. I'm in the building. I'm there. And you have to, I mean, we have students with all kinds of issues, learning issues, special ed. I mean, we meet the need. Romeo does a very good job in meeting the needs of every student where they're at. And the only, I mean, it's not fair to take the, the privacy rights away from, say, females in the bathroom. Can't do that. You just can't. Same with boys. So the only way to make it fair for everybody and the transgender student, you want them to feel comfortable because they're, they're, they're young, they're maturing and they're, they're confused and they're trying to figure themselves out. So I think it's safer and secure for everybody just to stick with that option. That's the fair option.
Right.
You really, I mean, you really can't, I don't see how you can argue that that's not fair.
Yeah. Yeah. And I've seen, you know, just being involved in the, you know, the, the bottom floor of the academies. You know, I've, I've been to, you know, all the committees and the, and the meetings and I see our students with compassion, empathy. You know, the, the kids are getting together and creating this idea for a comfort room, you know? And what could be in that comfort room and who it would, you know, be good for and all that. They, they have a lot of empathy from just their, obviously what they're learning from their, from their families. Thank goodness, we've got great families in our area.
Really do.
So I, you know, I also see it not being a big issue for them either. You know, to just say, okay, this has been talked about enough. Let's move on. It's, it goes, it's not education.
It doesn't revolve around that. There's so much more to every student. It's, it's just some people dig their heels in the sand and that's where they're, that's where they're, they want to bark and be angry. And it's, it's not about you. It's about the kids and all the kids.
Yeah.
And Romeo's doing a wonderful job.
They are. They are. And they got the report card on a lot of the, the budget.
And security even.
Security. They all got great grades last, this Monday. So, and you know, you look at even how they're presenting at the board meetings. You know, now they're having the, the students come and report on their grade levels. You know, you saw those two girls that got up. They were so nervous.
Spotlight. Yeah, the bulldog spotlight.
Spotlight, you know, but it's teaching them, you know, to look at another human being and talk, not be on a phone.
Right.
You know, so I see extraordinary, extraordinary things happening in our school district. What would you, in everything that you've been involved with, and I know you've been there every meeting and you watch them and you're involved in them, what would you do differently? That they're possibly not doing now?
Right. Well, I mean, I do think we can improve school security. I mean, that's part of my campaign. There are areas that we need another SRO. We could do more situational awareness training. Something they don't, I don't think they talk about much is normacy bias. And normacy bias, if you look at every unfortunate active shooter incident when it comes to schools, all the warning signs were there. They were all there. And whether they were ignored, missed, whatever the case may be, we could teach these students to recognize the signs, to see something before it happens and get that person or individual, whoever it may be, the help they need, that, that would be one way.
And make it safe and comfortable for those students to report or go to, you know, a counselor.
Teach them to look for the signs. Teach them to, give the, give the students the, the control a little bit. Maybe not elementary and make it voluntary. Don't, you can't force it. Same with staff. If staff wanted to do more training, do the situational awareness training. Do the scenario-based training. Let the students pick a scenario and let them run the training. I mean, that could save a life. That could save lives.
That's a really good idea. You should bring that to the board.
Well, it's, it's in my plan, so we'll see how that works out. So definitely school security. I think we need to work better on district-wide transparency. And that, you know, there's a lot of mistrust coming out of COVID between educators, parents, administrators, boards. I mean, you see it playing out in districts all around us.
It's all about communication.
Romeo's doing a phenomenal job of not doing what they're doing over there or what they're doing over there. And, and, and I love that. I do. I love that. But we need to encourage more positive and productive communication between teachers, parents and administrators. And one main way to do that would be just more transparency. I mean, you don't, you don't have to tell them everything because some things are confidential and you, you, you can't be a full open book. There's laws and, and guidelines and policies. But I think that would really change the, the culture a little bit, the environment of everyone coming together instead of being at odds to work, to work better together. So I guess the security, the, the transparency and just keeping it about education. Keep it about the kids. Keep the politics out. Keep the divisive political rhetoric out. Kids should be taught how to think, not what to think. And I've always been told and read that the best teacher is, the best teacher, student, their students don't know where they, don't know their opinion because the teacher teaches them to critically think. And we have so many teachers that do that. And I, I think that's a lost art and it's, it's hard, especially nowadays with the noise from social media. And there's a screen in their face all day. They're on a laptop all day. So, you know, I would love to see that. I know that's the new normal and that's the evolving world. But I guess I feel a little old school in that, that I hate them being in their screens all, all day long. I would love just to see, I mean, we have the trade pathways and the hands-on and that's great, but that's not it, at every level. That's more at high school.
And I think we have that more here.
Yeah.
You know, you see these kids, they're different because the parents are involved and the school is involved. The teachers are involved. The parents are in the school helping, you know, like you do. And they're not constantly on this, on the phone. I mean, a lot, but I see more of them, you know, in, in all of the kids that we use, you know, the, the initiatives that they have come up with themselves, formed groups to help people. You know, I see something that makes me not so fearful about our future.
Right.
You know, with these kids in charge.
Yeah.
And I think it has to do with the teachers, teaching them critical thinking, critical
Self-sufficiency.
And self-sufficiency.
And the parents. I mean, it boils down to the parents and the teachers are great aides in that. And we just, we have so many wonderful staff. I mean, it's, I
We do.
Like I said, you know, coming in with the fears and, and not really knowing and then coming on the inside and working, I've just been pleasantly surprised. I really have been, it, it calmed my worry and my fear a little bit about things that I didn't really know or wasn't sure about, so.
Well, it's just like when the teachers support the, the school, the student and when the admin supports the teachers.
Right. Yeah.
That trickles down and that's what makes it good.
Right. And if, if we get that transparency and, and all, there's a lot of things. We don't have enough time here to sit here and say what. I think we're doing great. I think we can do better in some areas. And I think, I think the biggest thing is having more board members now that you're seeing run or younger, their parents.
Yeah.
Whether they have kids in Romeo or another district, they have a better idea or perspective on what's happening. And, you know, we have some wonderful, great board members, but I think that, I think some of the older board members that have been there a long, long time, they're very respected. I just don't feel that since their kids are grown or wherever they're, that they're at in life, I don't, I don't know that they're quite knowing what's going on in the sense of like, they're probably not on social media as much, which is a good thing.
They don't understand.
Yeah, they don't really, they're not having the feedback from their kids. Maybe their grandkids. I don't know. I don't know them all personally, but I really think we need to have more parents sitting on the board, maybe a teacher or something like that, just to have a better understanding of what's happening now. Because what was happening 10, 20 years ago, it's a totally different animal now. So I really think that would, that would be a positive thing for the district too.
And I think you're seeing that in this transition. I mean, I've followed them, you know, for many, many years. You know, it always used to be that kind of older person on the board. Now we're seeing, you know, you guys, you know, parents running for board positions, which typically a parent doesn't have the time to do that, you know, to take the time away from their family. But it's needed because people are realizing that they have to be involved in order to make exact change.
Right.
And I think our schools have done an amazing job, but I, I, I'm very appreciative to the new blood that's coming in. And hopefully we'll be getting a position on that board.
One can hope. November 5th, we're on the back of the ballot. People, don't forget.
Yes, don't forget. We're on the back of the ballot. And that's another reason why we did this and the reason why we, you know, tape the board meetings is for transparency.
Right.
Is for people to actually watch it.
Right.
It might be boring, but at least then you know what's going on. It, it might be boring, but at least then you know what's going on. Then if, then that's how you get involved and a lot more people get involved. So if you were to talk to your voters that are gonna go to the polls on November fifth, what would you say to them? Why they need to vote for you?
Well, um, you know, my past employment, um, a- right out of college, I was a sign language interpreter. So I've worked in public, private, college, special education, uh, classroom settings. I've worked in a lot of classroom settings. So I have a lot of and we're talking over the last twenty years. I feel like I wear, I have a lot of experience in different settings, different ages. Um, I think that's a positive to bring. So now being in Romeo, since I work here, I think me wearing the hat of employee, parent volunteer, um, I think that brings some good, I would say balanced insight, um, to the board. Um, because not only am I just a parent sitting in the audience or a parent calling the school or helping my kid, um, I'm on the inside. So I feel like I might have a better um, what was I, what was I gonna say? A better, um, well-rounded view.
Balance.
Balance of what, of what we can do to improve and what's working and what I might see that is not working. Um, so because I'm the parent, the employee, um, and my background in education, um, I think, I think that's probably what makes me a best fit. Um, and I'm not afraid to be the voice. I, I, you know.
No, you're not.
The biggest problem is people, they love to complain and they'll complain, but when it comes down to doing something about it, you know, the, they have their reasons and that's fine. They're busy, they're, they're nervous to put themselves out there. I mean, it's scary. I, I wasn't excited to start speaking out. I don't, I don't love the sound of my own voice. But.
You do a very good job.
Well, thank you. I, um, if you want to see the change, you gotta make the change. And I just, I look around at everyone and I'm like, I hear you, I see you, but what are you doing to make that better? What are you doing to improve that? And that's why I'm running. I, it's for the kids. I want to keep Romeo the way it is. Romeo is a wonderful family, um, supportive district and I, I want to see it stay that way. We look at all the districts around us. Um, I won't mention names, but you know, that are kind of imploding and blowing up with the politics and the, and the division and we don't want that here. We don't want it. We want to keep it focused on the kids, on the families, on the educators and we're unique in, in that way, when you compare us to the other school districts and I want to keep it that way.
Yeah. Yeah. And it has a lot to do with our environment. You know, the village is being the center. You know, people, if they don't come face to face and communicate.
Right.
Then they never get someone else's idea. You know, they only see what they, what they hear.
Right.
And, you know, you see it. I mean, the homecoming parade and, you know, the peach festival parade. I mean, everybody's in the streets talking.
Yeah.
You know, getting to know one another. They're in the parks, getting to know one another. And, you know, your generation is what brings that back.
Right.
The need for that.
Right.
Because you see the value. And we're so glad, so glad that you went out of your way to go out for this position. So Allison Bowman, we'll see you on the ballot, on the back of the ballot.
Back of the ballot.
Come November fifth. And thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.